Welcome to City Council. I'll call the meeting to order. First item will be the invocation and pledge of allegiance. This evening, we have Pastor Brent Williams from Faith Christian Fellowship. Thank you Pastor.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, thank you for Boulder City. Thank you for our City Council. May this town be a peaceful place for those retired, a joyful, safe place for the children, a restful place for the workers, a helpful place for the hurting, a family-friendly place for young families, and a caring community to all. We are blessed to be a blessing. Grant the City Council wisdom to make excellent decisions. They are leaders. As leaders with influence, may they speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves. May they not just be climbers but connectors. May they inspire others with a vision of what each of us can contribute to this town. Watch over our police, firemen, and all our city workers, that they may do their duties well and with a positive outlook. May they see their work as valuable, essential, and as a service to others. Lord, help us each to make the most of our lives. Help us to run our race to the best of our ability, to finish the course, to come to the finish line with no regrets. May we be encouragers. Help us to invoke in others the capacity to dream. We pray for you to help us to be diligent, faithful, moral, upright, kind, and caring, for integrity always matters more than skill, talent, and genius. We thank you for our veterans and all in military service. Because of their sacrifice, we can live without fear. We are grateful to them, for we know that freedom isn't free. Protect them throughout the world. In Jesus' name, amen.
Again, I want to say thank you to Pastor Williams for your kind words. Our next event here, Mr. Noyle is going to take the lead on this, but this is public announcements. And, Mr. Noyle, go ahead.
Honorable Mayor, Council, guests. Recently, I had a chance to visit the Kennedy Space Center during the celebration of the 50th anniversary of the Apollo 11 lunar landing, which occurred on July 20, 1969. I was alive during that time, by the way. And it landed in a place called the Sea of Tranquility on the moon. While I was there, I got to check out the very impressive displays at the Apollo Center. And I spent quite a bit of time looking at that. But something caught my eye as I looked over on one of the side of the building, and I saw a nice kiosk that said Fisher Space Pen. And so I quickly went over there, and I got to read a lot about the history of the company. And I also noticed that later on, in the souvenir shop, guess what was being sold as well? And that was Fisher Space Pen. But in 1948, inventor and pen manufacturer Paul C. Fisher founded the Fisher Pen Company. Mr. Fisher invented a retractable pressurized pen that can withstand any temperature from minus 30 degrees to 250 degrees. The Space Pen endured rigorous testing before being selected by NASA, and is still in use today, even on the International Space Station. In 1976, the Fisher Space Company moved into its 30,000-square-foot manufacturing facility here in Boulder City, and is the employer of approximately 65 employees who create the company's unique line of high-quality writing instruments. Today, Fisher Space Pen Company products are sold all over the world and have distributors in 52 countries. Paul Fisher passed away in 2006 at the age of 93. However, his legacy is being carried on by his son Kerry Fisher, who is here tonight. Mayor, I think you also have a few words that you would like to say as well.
Thank you. We do have a proclamation here. Again, outstanding that Fisher Pen was selected as Nevada's representative at the Maiden USA event in Washington, DC. The proclamation, "I, Kierna McManus, Mayor of Boulder City, Nevada, do hereby proclaim the 13th day of August 2019 as Fisher Space Pen Day. The City Council of Boulder City and staff congratulate Fisher Space Pen Company for the 50th anniversary of the Space Pen being used on the Apollo 11 moon landing mission, as well as all of the Apollo missions, and for your recent visit to Washington, DC for the third annual Maiden America Product Showcase. We appreciate your commitment to Boulder City, and we would like to present you with this and maybe get a photo with everyone. Thank you."[368.41][368.41](Applause) of Boulder City for many, many years. So, thank you again. I believe we have signed most of the 4th graders' agendas for the Nevada citizenship. We do have a spare pen that we wound up with, so if any of you are missing one, we have it up here for you. Any other 4th graders that did not get their agenda signed tonight?[461.81][461.81](Laughter) He just wants a free pen, that's all. And again, we do appreciate the 4th graders coming. We know this is an important part of their education, and happy to have you all. If all the 4th graders would like to stand, please, we'll recognize you. Thank you again for coming tonight. At this time, we will have our opening public comment period. The public comment period will consist of five minutes and be based on the stated rules. This portion of the public comment is for items that appear on the agenda and are limited to those. As always, we would like people to be civil and concise. And anyone wishing to speak? Ms. Barnett?
My name is Linda Barnett. I'm going to take advantage. I love my Fisher pens. I'd like to speak on Agenda Item Number 17 regarding the formation of a committee to oversee the repair or replacement of our current municipal pool. I hope the council will be unanimous in supporting this agenda item tonight, and I thank Mr. Mayor for bringing it forward.
Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Duncan McCoy. I'm a resident of Boulder City and two-term former City Councilman. I wish to speak on Item Number 18, the proposal and discussion to form a special committee for the pool. First of all, congratulations on your election. So, really something. Now, the puzzle is how to get the pool project on track, and that's an interesting puzzle. The community wants a new pool, but not a $40 million new pool, and not a new pool that costs $5 million in capital improvement money to plan and design. There already is a committee in place to discuss planning for the pool project. The B.C. Parks and Rec Commission has been working on the pool project for years. Even so, the council surely has the authority to appoint a special committee, if that's what you desire to do. I hope, if the council decides to appoint the special committee, that the normal procedures for soliciting volunteer interest applications is followed. The procedure reads into the public record the names of the applicants for the appointment, who they are, and why they feel qualified to serve on the committee. In the event that volunteer interest applications are solicited for this committee, should you decide to create it, I think that the public has a right to know also whether those appointees are members of the community alliance or not, particularly since the alliance has moved to form its own pool committee, independent of the city. And of course, the alliance has a perfect right to form whatever committees they want and discuss whatever they want, but the city also has a responsibility to ensure that city business is transacted in front of the public with the lights on. Imagine, if you will, the community alliance appointing a committee to study the pool, and then by some weird quirk of fate, that same committee gets appointed by the city, and then they have an open meeting law problem if they want to get together and discuss it outside the context of a scheduled meeting. So, I would urge you to be careful about that. I don't know how much the pool is going to cost, or where the funds are going to come from, but I think it's going to cost a lot, and the longer it takes, the more it will cost. If you just go with a pool rather than a whole recreation complex, it will probably cost less than the $40 million that was proposed in the bond issued proposal, but I don't think you can build it for five, and that was turned down too. So, I don't know where the money's going to come from. I just know that these things have a way of increasing as you go down through time. So, the sooner the city builds it, the cheaper it's going to be, I think. In the meeting agenda packet for Item 18, page 2 of the mayor's memo to the city manager requesting this agenda item, and I refer specifically to page 453 of the meeting packet, references made to the city charter provision describing the authority of the City Council to suspend any city officer by a majority vote of the council. Interestingly, there does not appear to be any definition of city officer anywhere within the text of the charter. If I worked for the city, I might be concerned about the presence of this language in the memo. It could be interpreted as a threat for removal if, for some reason, the council is not pleased. And if you go back and look at Nevada revised statutes at the beginning of each chapter, you're going to find that there's a list of definitions for the terms that are discussed in the chapter. Our charter doesn't have that. So, you know, I would be concerned if I were a city employee that has supervisory responsibilities. I don't know if anyone currently on the council has significant experience managing people, but I do know from my own experience, which is extensive, by the way, that threats, whether they're supposed, explicit, or implied, are not an effective way to motivate staff or volunteers to achieve excellent results. So, you guys now are driving the bus, and we're all on the bus, and good luck with the pool project. I hope it works. I don't know how it's going to work right now, but this will all unfold in time, I'm sure. As you succeed, the community succeeds, and we all succeed, and we all want a better community. So, thank you for your service. It's going to be an interesting time, and thank you for listening.
Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? Judy DeShane?
I have a whole list of things, but the most important things, or one of the most important, I believe, is Item Number 15, which concerns a gate across the street. I realize it's a private street and all that, but if you go and look at it, it really creates a gated community with two houses behind it. It's a very nice-looking gate. I have no problem with that, but the idea that it creates a gated community, and I went around town today looking at a few other things, and I can see where a number of other people could possibly do this same thing. And you can't allow this and not allow someone else to do the same thing, because it would be an easy thing to do, really, if you drive around town and look at various places. We have a code that says no gated communities. It needs to be enforced for everybody, not just some. And the other item I wanted to talk about was Item 12, that I realize that's just because of how it happens, and it happens a lot, but it's just a caution that I think the city needs to be aware of and take a look at. We've had, I believe this is the third or fourth one in the past roughly year, that has come before the council, where the city has abandoned city land and sold it to the property owner that has encroached on it. And I don't think that's quite right in how it goes. Sometimes these encroachments have gone on for well over five years. You're looking at 10, 15 years in some cases. And so that means the city has not received any revenue off of increased taxes for the increased land, and like this particular piece, it's going to be 7,700 square feet. That's larger than some of the homes that are being built in Storybrooke. Because now, I'm in the girl's streets, and I believe my lot is all of 7,200 square feet. So, this is a significant piece of land, or size, rather, and it got valued at 93 cents a square foot. That seems a little low to me, but that's how it came out, and that's according to our rules. I think we need to be watching for encroachments and stop these things before they get to this point. And, oh, I guess back on Item 15, there was the letter from the person that's appealing this made a comment about Mr. Lassoff. I was at that Planning Commission meeting, and I spoke against allowing this then. And Mr. Lassoff was very upfront. He immediately said he knew the person applying for it, and that the person was a client. So, he did not do anything wrong, nor did he intend to do anything wrong. He was very above board about everything and voting for it, voting against this because it is against our rules. Thank you. Oh, and I have done all my Christmas shopping at Fisher Space Pen a few years. They have great pens for gifts.[1103.24][1103.24](Laughter)
Thank you. Anyone else? You, sir?
Hello, my name is Charles Boylan. I'm the race director for the Quarter Midgets. I've looked at the agenda in the packet, and I am thankful that you're willing to look at this, but I have a few concerns. A sublease will have to pay the city 50% of all proceeds. We don't have proceeds. We don't even charge people to come in. So, that was sort of a flag that I looked at. And another one was rent. I'm a Boulder City resident. The guy that's up for this lease is a Henderson resident. He has to pay no monetary values to lease this land, but yet I've got to pay him as a subleasing money when I'm a resident and taxpayer of Boulder City. That don't sit well with me. The other thing is, far as improvements, we've improved about $30,000 to $40,000 over the winter until I asked for a copy of the lease, and I raised the flag and said, hey, something right here, this lease is not valid. What we've been doing, leasing from this individual, has been illegal ever since, I want to say, 2017 that they started. I actually started this in October of 2018. I have no kids involved. There are some young kids here that today, their families have spent a lot of money to buy cars, and these cars have to go through a vigorous safety inspection. The track has to go through a vigorous safety inspection. We are sanctioned by USAC. USAC requires us to have a million-dollar policy. We have some kid go-kart folks that we also, that USAC, they're not sanctioned by USAC, so we have another million-dollar policy for them. We have a waiver that we sign, and we've always added the city to our insurance. QMA, which is another sanctioning organization, they came, Quarter Midgets of America, they came out and inspected our track before we took over. And then when we took over, we had them to come back out, so we did a lot more safety and cleaned up about five truckloads of garbage out of there, and graded and built new bathrooms that would be respectful for children and women to use the restroom in. When we first arrived there, there was a urinal hanging on the outside of a wall. I've never seen, or never would want to use something like that as traffic's going down. We cleaned all that up. And then in January, which is probably my fault, I saw the flag, and I said, we need to do something about this, and it seems like we tried to do everything right, and we're the ones getting punished. Well, it ain't me. It ain't about me. It's about those kids. Their kids range from six to 16 years old. They run about 20, 15 to 20 miles an hour around that track. It's a Honda, basically, lawnmower motor. They have restrictor plates on those for beginners. As they increase their knowledge, the restrictor plate is a little bit bigger, and then it becomes a little bit bigger. And then, when you're about 14 or 15 years old, you can run up into the 160 lights or 160 heavies, which the weight goes up on the car, and the speeds do not really increase a whole lot. Of course, they do increase some, because it's a 160 motor instead of a 120 restrictor motor now. But, and we were deemed that we had a good, safe place, because we went and bought plastic barriers and put around the track, because the previous were using tires and hay bales, which caused multiple accidents by the kids, because the tires would want to launch the cars. The plastic barriers that we bought will keep them inside the track. And I appreciate your consideration in looking into this, and I really appreciate your time that you're giving me to speak up here today, and I would like your consideration in really reviewing this, because I feel like I'm the one getting penalized when I feel like I've done everything right. As a Boulder City resident, I don't think I should be paying rent to somebody that does not live in the city of Boulder City, and we have about, I would say, eight young kids and about 20 more that was interested in this town alone, and we were promoting Boulder City. It was going to be called the Boulder City Quarter Midgets. We bought that name from another individual, and we were setting our cars out. We were in the parades. We were really promoting Boulder City, because we feel like, as a resident of Boulder City, that this is a fine place to live. And thank you for your time.[1415.47][1415.47](Applause)
Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Phan?
My name is Glenn Phan. Good evening, Mayor, Council, city staff. I want to speak about Item 15, about the gate. I was also at the Planning Commission meeting and stuff like that when this was brought up. And some other information, I thought that the Planning Commission, I've been critical of the Planning Commission before at this microphone, but at this meeting, I thought they handled themselves very well. They did a good job. They listened, they talked, they conversed. City staff was well-prepared. They brought out the information to the Planning Commission, and they discussed it, and they voted no. And the reason they voted no is because there is nothing in our city that allows gated communities. You know, he went up, he was told, you know, he started to put it up, he was told to stop, because he didn't have a permit. He didn't stop. He kept going. If the city found out, he came back, and the city went back, told him, hey, you've got to block the doors of, eliminate the eyes. He hasn't gone along with that. The gates are closed all the time, except when they come and go. He just thumbed his nose at the whole process, you know, to the whole city, to all of us. You know, he didn't ask for a permit. He said, oh, his builder's going to get it. Never happened. He didn't get it. He was talked to, didn't listen. Told not to, you know, not to finish it. He went ahead and did it. Wouldn't happen to the rest of us if we don't listen. He just thumbed his nose. I think that's wrong. I mean, not only is it wrong from that of the gate there against all city codes and stuff like that, but just his actions and stuff alone, I think, you know, you need to think hard about that. And another note, I want to speak a little bit about the pool, just a quick thought. I have no idea if it'll fly or not, but okay, we got an old pool. It needs to be renovated one of these days. Something needs to be built. How about you think about this for something temporary? Veterans Park, you put a basic outdoor pool for the kids and stuff like that. People can go swimming in the morning. Don't put a dome on it. Put basic showers in it, outdoor showers, whatever. You have a pool. Kids can play in in the hot summer. Now, you figure out something for replacing the old pool. Okay, so what? It gets torn down. We still have a functioning pool. Yeah, it only opened six months out of the year. At least we'd have a pool there. Probably can build something like that pretty economically, probably just with the monies that the city has. So, just think about that, just a thought. You know, build a small pool down there people can play in, and then if we have a pool, when it comes time to tear it down, the old pool, there's still a pool that exists. Yeah, it's not a big fancy one. It doesn't have all the gyms and stuff like that, but be a place for the kids to go swimming in the summertime. Just a thought. Thank you.
Someone in the back had their hand up earlier. Please come forward.
Good evening, is this on? Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nice to see you, city staff. I'm Peggy Levitt, a Boulder City resident, and tonight I'd like to speak to Agenda Item Number 16. It is baffling to me why the Historic Preservation Planner position was removed from the budget. The city and City Council have been criticized for years for doing nothing about historic preservation. When the city was finally in a position to put resources behind historic preservation, it has been rejected by some of the people who were the most vocal critics. With regard to this position, the goal of the Historic Preservation Planner became one of the top priorities in our strategic plan, and part of that plan was hiring a Historic Preservation Planner. This person was to help with developing up-to-date codes and ordinances, and to assist the city in prioritizing city-owned historic buildings, and to explore the best way to preserve them. This planner position would also provide additional support to the community development departmental functions, most especially to the current city planner position, who now provides the only staff support to historic preservation, in addition to her many other responsibilities. Therefore, a new historic planner, Historic Preservation Planner could be more responsive to the needs of the Historic Preservation Committee, and would also have the expertise and time to take full advantage of state and national resources and programming. If I understand the rationale correctly, this position was removed to save money in the budget. But this reasoning flies in the face of all the contracting positions, especially in public works and utilities that were brought in-house and made into full-time positions because it was determined that it was actually saved money for the city. In addition to the monetary savings, it was argued that employees would acquire institutional knowledge of how this city operates, which was considered very valuable to the city. So, in the long run, it was decided the city was better served by not contracting out these services. You could say the exact same thing about this position, based on the stated needs for historic preservation and the cost of contracting out. The city could actually spend more money for contracting out services than could be provided in-house. With respect to the institutional knowledge, I think the city would want someone who is invested in this community, gets to know the people in the historic district, becomes an expert in our own unique history, and really becomes a part of our historic community, not someone who flies in not someone who flies in and flies out of town and has no commitment nor connection to Boulder City. I'm also aware of comparisons made to other cities who don't have full-time historic planners. Although I'm positive most cities handle historic preservation like we have in Boulder City in that historic preservation is part of an additional duty for a city planner. However, as our mayor has pointed out many times, with respect to surveys done by the historic preservation committee, the residents in Boulder City have said loud and clear and by a large majority that historic preservation is a top priority for them. So as a city, I think we need to put our money where our mouth is and reconsider funding the historic preservation planning position. Thank you.
The gentleman in the back, please.
Hello. My name is Carl Schurkenbach. My daughter races Quarter Midgets and has since she turned five. She's about to turn seven. Anything you can do for us as a racing community? We have no place to race. I travel to California, Arizona. It's very costly. I own two cars. I would really like a place to race. I would really like it to be Boulder City. I love your guys' talent. I play golf here. And, you know, you've got a lot of kids that need this and there's nothing. There's no go-kart track. There's no Quarter Midget track. There's nothing. So please take that into consideration for these kids. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Kim Green and I live in Boulder City. My kids used to race down at the Quarter Midget Track and I'm just kind of going off of Carl and Charles, I really hope you guys consider looking at that. And we do really need that here in Boulder City. It really opens a lot of doors for kids. My kids are now going to be racing at the Bull Ring at the Las Vegas Motor Speedway and if not for that track, we would have never been able to do that. And, yeah, it's just a really great thing for the kids and I'm wondering what Charles is wondering too, why someone from Henderson is leasing that land and not Boulder City? I'm really confused about that. I don't know if you guys can kind of clarify that whole situation. As for the insurance that I just learned tonight that we're supposed to be paying down there, none of the parents can afford that. I don't know who's going to pay for that, but we don't get any money for doing this. We pay a lot of money for our kids to race down there. So I feel like all that needs to be really looked at. And anyways, yeah, we'd just like to encourage you guys to support that. It was a really, it's a good thing for Boulder City. If the kids would get sponsors, we would advertise the sponsors down there and the businesses in Boulder City. We had a couple up here ourselves. And, you know, people came from Utah to race here. We had Utah and California, I think. And so they would stay in hotels, they would eat out. It's just a really good thing for our town and it's really something that we need to bring back. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Katie Tyler. Regarding item 19, I submitted a volunteer data sheet for the Parks and Rec Commission and just want to take this opportunity to introduce myself. My family moved to Boulder City in 1991. I attended both elementary schools here, the junior high and high school. Then yesterday, I actually dropped my son off at Andrew J. Mitchell for his first day of kindergarten. I benefited so much from our Parks and Recreation Department. I tried every sport they offered and ended up settling into swimming. I was recruited by numerous colleges for academics and swimming, including Cornell, Yale, and Johns Hopkins. I chose a small private school in California and had the opportunity to compete for a Division One school. I graduated with a degree in bi mathematics. I have a master's degree in public health with a healthcare administration emphasis. Currently, I'm staying at home with my two young children, coaching the Boulder City Henderson Swim Team here at the Boulder City Pool. I even had the exciting opportunity to coach kindergarten T-ball this spring, which was definitely a memorable experience. It has been an amazing opportunity to try and give back to my community and open doors for kids in this town. I have been a lifeguard at the Boulder City Pool, taught swim lessons, and coached. All my first professional experiences came from the Boulder City Parks and Recreation Department and the amazing people that worked for it, and for that, I am truly grateful. I am now watching the next generation benefit the same way I did, and I would really love the opportunity to help preserve the wonderful things that our city already does while continuing to grow. The Parks and Recreation Department here enriches every generation in our town while bringing them closer together, and I really feel like that's a beautiful thing. Thank you for your consideration.
Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing no others, we'll move on to item number one on the, or excuse me, we'll move on to approval of the regular agenda. Madam City Clerk, any changes?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff's requesting to remove item number 13, please.
Mr. City Manager?
No further changes.
And Mr. City Attorney?
No changes.
Okay, Council, any changes or comments? Have a motion to approve then with changes?
I make a motion to approve with changes.
All in favor?
I'll second it and then I.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And do we have Councilman Harhay on the line?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move to the regular agenda now for approval. Madam City Clerk, any changes, excuse me, of the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor. Staff is requesting to remove item number four, please.
Mr. City Manager?
No further changes.
Mr. City Attorney?
No changes.
Okay, Council, any changes?
No, no changes.
I'm requesting item number six be moved to the regular agenda.
We need a second on that.
Need a motion?
On the motion?
With changes?
I'll motion with changes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will move then to approval of the minutes. Any changes?
The minutes were approved when you approved the consent agenda. I just wanted to note though that there was a small correction. Thank you. Councilmember Folda, that was placed on the dais. We'll just make that when we enter the final minutes into record.
Thank you. All right, that will then, I believe, bring us to item number six.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Keegan Luttrell, the Public Works Director. Item number six is Resolution 6974, a resolution approving the final acceptance and bond release for Tecron Solar for the construction and installation of a water main extension. I'm here to answer any questions.
The primary reason I asked for this to be moved to the regular agenda was for additional explanation and also the opportunity for the public to understand the project a little better. Can you give us an idea of what the project consists of?
Yeah, they had a map. Okay. The red line that the cursor is on right now is the water main extension. It was about 6,000 feet of 12-inch water line for fire suppression and about 4,500 feet of 2-inch water line mainly for the restroom use.
Okay, and where's this water coming from?
It's coming from our existing 14-inch line, but it ties in up on the north end of the red boundary there. Not quite to the very far north end, but continues down to the south through their property.
So this was not related in any way to the pipeline project that was just completed?
No, sir.
Out to the interchange?
No, sir.
Okay. Are there any plans for that pipeline to be extended beyond the exchange right now or the interchange right now?
We don't have any plans on it right now. As I stated, must have been about two months ago when we were doing the final acceptance of the Phase Two of the El Dorado Water Line. We're analyzing the documents that, the contract with the solar companies stating what our obligation is. We've reached out to them. We haven't heard anything back from them yet.
Okay. So again, my point being that this particular project is not at an expense to the city. Is that correct?
Correct. The contractor paid about $91,000 to extend this water line, like I said, for fire suppression and for restrooms.
Okay. And this water, though, is supplied by Boulder City? It's purchased at the commercial rate or?
I'm not sure what rate it's purchased at. I'm guessing the commercial rate, but I can look into that and get back to you.
And the usage of the water is metered, so we know how much water is going out there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, any other questions from Council?
I think you covered any that I might have had, but.
Same here.
I'll go ahead then with the motion to approve Resolution 6974.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, item number seven then is the land management plan or perhaps the land management process, depending on who's referring to it. Mr. Mays, I believe this is your item.
Mayor, this is a bill introduction only.
Okay.
I will, I will motion to introduce Bill Number 1854. Waive the reading, accept the title.
Bill Number 1854, an ordinance of the city of Boulder City, Nevada, to amend Title Nine, Chapter Two of the city code, land management for city-owned property. Bill Number 1854 will be considered at the August 27th regular meeting.
Thank you. Item number eight is also a bill introduction.
I'll move to introduce Bill Number 1855. Waive the reading, accept for the title.
Bill Number 1855, an ordinance of the city of Boulder City, approving amendment Number 12-1438A to agreement Number 121438, an access agreement between the city of Boulder City and GoGo LLC for access to their communication site facilities on top of Red Mountain. Bill Number 1855 will also be considered at the August 27th regular meeting.
Okay, item number nine is a similar introduction of bill.
I would like to make a motion to introduce item nine, Bill Number 1856, reading the title only.
Bill Number 1856, an ordinance of the city of Boulder City, approving amendment Number 07-1177D to agreement Number 07-1177C, a land lease agreement between the city of Boulder City and GoGo LLC for communication site facilities on top of Red Mountain.
Thank you. Item number 10, another bill introduction.
I would like to introduce item number 10, Bill Number 1850. I would like to make a motion to introduce an item 10, Bill Number 1857, reading the title only.
Bill Number 1857, an ordinance of the city of Boulder City, approving amendment Number 09-1270B to agreement Number 091270A, a land lease agreement between the city of Boulder City and C-Spot Run, Inc., for the construction, maintenance, and operation of a dog park at Veterans Park. Bill 1857 will also be considered at the August 27th meeting.
Thank you. Item number 11, I'm not sure, does this go back to James now or is it working this way?
I'll take the next one, yeah.
Oh, cool.
We've got a couple more. I'll move to a motion to introduce item number 11, introduction with title only.
Bill Number 1858, an ordinance of the city of Boulder City, approving amendment Number 00-674A to agreement Number 00-674, a land lease agreement between the city of Boulder City and RC Quarter Scale Association of America for the construction, maintenance, and operation of a radio-controlled model vehicle racing facility on Quail Run Drive. Bill Number 1858 will also be considered at the August 27th meeting.
Thank you. Item number 12 is also a bill introduction.
I would like to make a motion to introduce item 12, Bill Number 1859, reading the title only.
Bill Number 1859, an ordinance of the city of Boulder City, approving agreement Number 19-1837 between the city of Boulder City and Guard Jamison to sell approximately 7,000 square feet of city land to adjust the adjacent residential property line located at 115 Castle Montana Court so as to incorporate within the property boundaries improvements previously constructed on city-owned land within the private property boundary. Bill Number 1859 will also be considered at the August 27th meeting.
Thank you. Item number 13 has been removed, so we'll move to item number 14. I know Mr. Mays had something. I just couldn't remember which one it was.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I am Michael Mays, your Community Development Director, and I am pleased to present the department's annual report to the city council. The Community Development Department has five areas of responsibility for the city. They include processing building permits and inspections, planning and zoning responsibilities, economic development, code enforcement, and historic preservation. And I'd like to briefly highlight each of those areas of responsibility for you tonight, talking about not only what we have been doing during the past year, but some of the things we're focusing on over the next year. So with building inspections, I wanted to highlight some areas of focus for this function. They include streamlining the permit process, improving customer service, and improving transparency. I also want to highlight some data regarding the activities of the department over the past several years. As you can see on the screen, in calendar year 2018, we saw a significant increase in the number of building permits that were issued. This was in a large part due to solar projects, gingerwood, electrical permits, and residential. Consequently, we also saw a significant increase in the number of building inspections. Over 12,000 were conducted during the calendar year of 2018. You also see from the chart certain spikes in inspection activity during key years, 2014, 2016, and 2018. In those years, we had significant solar projects which warranted the additional inspections. And this is a reason why in selecting the third-party consultant, CSG, to utilize for building inspections works well for the city because as building permits fluctuate over the years, we can ramp up and ramp down as needed. We've also seen over the last five years over $7 million in building permit revenue that has been collected as a result of these projects. We are working on several efforts to improve the customer experience as it relates to building permits and inspections. I wanted to highlight briefly a couple of those areas and starting with the permit applications. applications. We have updated the permit applications. We are creating checklists that coincide with specific building permits to make it easier for the applicants to understand what they need to submit with that particular building permit. And we're working on automation of email notifications. So once we receive emails from the applicants, we can better communicate with them. We're also improving customer service in several areas. We want to expand the online building permits. Right now, there are several building permits that an applicant 24/7 could go online, submit the material to us. They don't even have to come into the office, and we can review that. A replacement of an air conditioner, for example, is one of those. We want to add to that list. We are working on the resulting of inspections in the field. The prior process required a lot of paperwork, a lot of duplication of effort. Inspector going to the field would write down notes. They would come back into the office, have to type those notes into our computer system. And this way, they will be able to do their inspections, make their comments, and put it directly into the system, saving time and work. It's also going to result in being more paperless by our department because then we're not having to send out notices to the applicants about things that need to be addressed. It will also allow those applicants to find out via email that their inspection was approved, also saving time and making it easier for them to know the progress of their building Two things that we're working on for the future is the ability for applicants to schedule inspections online. Right now, they have to call in and ask for an inspection for a following day. We want to develop a process to make it easier for them to just submit electronically their request for those inspections. And then also to look at providing inspections on Fridays. With our offices' hours being Monday through Thursday, this will be an additional service that we can provide to our customers. In terms of transparency, we are currently in the process of contracting with a firm that will digitize all of our building permits. Right now, about 20% of building permits are scanned. We want to be able to provide the opportunity for our residents and businesses to be able to go online electronically and be able to review all of those building permits. And so that will improve transparency and access to information for our residents and businesses. As it relates to planning and development, there are a couple of areas of focus. They include cleaning up Title 11. Obviously, we are working with the Clerk's Office and the other departments on areas right now, but there are sections that are out of date that we want to focus on over the next year. Compliance with the Growth Control Ordinance, and following through with the action items identified in the 2025 Strategic Plan as it relates to Goal C, managed growth and development. Also, with 2020, we have the decennial census. And so the department will be working with the US Census in making sure that everyone within the community is counted. As I noted, the, one of the responsibilities is compliance with the Growth Control Ordinance. Specifically, Goal C, Strategy Three of the 2025 Strategic Plan says that the department shall prepare an annual report demonstrating compliance with the Growth Control Ordinance. This chart highlights the history of that compliance, and let me just walk you through it. As you can see on the chart, we have in green the bar which represents the maximum number of residential permits that can be issued each year. And let me clarify, each year, each construction year, which begins July 1st of each year and ends the following June 30th. It follows our fiscal year. This complies with the Growth Control Ordinance, a maximum of 120. You'll see on the chart that the bar in blue represents the number of allotments that were issued for each of those years. And so you can clearly see that the city has been in full compliance with the Growth Control Ordinance and not issuing nearly as many building permits and allotments as could be per our ordinance. In yellow, that denotes future reservations. And the council recently approved those reservations for the next two construction years, 30 each, for storybook homes. Want to talk a little bit about economic development. There are four areas of focus for economic development with the department. They include the economic development plan. We will be bringing the plan with the action items back to the City Council in September. And with council's approval, that will be our department's roadmap in moving forward with economic development efforts for the community. Just like the Strategic Plan, there will be measurable, actionable items that we'll be able to report out to the council and the community on our progress. It also includes business retention visits. It's important to continue to meet with businesses, understand their needs, and how we can continue to be partners in their success. Fisher's Face Pen was a perfect example of that, and so that's an important goal for us. Acting as a business liaison to the business community is an important role of the Economic Development Coordinator, Rafi Faztekjen. And he is the go-to person for businesses in the community if they have any questions about the city, and how he can answer those questions for them. And obviously, promotion of the RDA or Redevelopment Area Agency. Rafi has met with 160 businesses and conducted 105 business retention visits since he was hired in November. And again, this is an important role for the community to have that conversation with local businesses. Regarding the RDA, the RDA is an authority granted by the state to municipalities to encourage reinvestment. There are several areas that we are focused on to encourage greater reinvestment by the business community in our RDA district. They have included the simplification of the application. Businesses are very busy doing what they do, their business. And so one of the things we found is that the application was very complicated, and there was a lot to fill out, so we simplified that. In addition, the Economic Development Coordinator's role is to provide assistance to businesses with this process. So some of the functions before that were the responsibility of the business owner to complete now is the Economic Development Coordinator's responsibility. That helps to encourage participation. He's also going to be working on the development of the Historic Preservation RDA Grant. The council approved $100,000 for that grant this year. And so later this year, you will see the proposed grant application and approve that, and we want to get that utilized by the business community to encourage preservation efforts. Already, we're seeing some of the benefits of the activities that have been put in place by our Economic Development Coordinator. This chart shows the level of grants that were awarded over the last five years. You can see that there was activity in 2016 around 21,000, but in 2017 and 2018, no grants were awarded. And so we are hopeful that these efforts are going to encourage greater participation. Already, 2019, we saw 29,000. And so far, within fiscal year 2020, we've already had 33,000 awarded by the council for RDA grants, and we're just at the beginning of the year. And so I hope to, next year, when I come back to you, show you a much larger number for the RDA. One of the other things that has been a concern for the community over the past year is the opening of I-11. And so with economic development now being a priority for the community and a focus for our department, one of the things that we have been working on is compiling information to track the impacts of I-11. One of those pieces of data is traffic data regarding traffic specifically on Boulder City Parkway. NDOT has provided us traffic information comparing traffic the first week of 2018 and the first week of 2019 in April in two areas. One area near Veterans Memorial Drive and Boulder City Parkway, the other near the I-11 Highway 93 interchange. And as you can see with the slides, that traffic analysis shown a 30% to 40% drop in traffic at Veterans Memorial and Boulder City Parkway, and a 70% drop in traffic at near I-11 and Highway 93. Another way to measure the impact of the opening of I-11 is tracking our tourism dollars. And so last year, the council approved a contract with Visa View in which we collect credit card and debit card information to be able to see how tourists are spending dollars in our community. Some of the highlights of that data so far, and let me just emphasize, this is the data we received so far. We're going to be continuing to evaluate this over the year, but some of the preliminary information has showed a slight drop in domestic visitors to the community comparing 2018 to 2017, but an average credit card holder spending going up 50%. So tourists are spending more here on average. Some of the positive impacts that have occurred since the comparison between 2019 and 2018 is an increase in dollars being spent in our local restaurants, grocery, and hotel motels. Where we've seen negative impacts are more related to convenience businesses through gas stations and fast food. This ties in to the traffic count data that we've received, that if people were planning to get between Arizona and Nevada, they took I-11 and maybe didn't utilize some of our convenience services. But if they were tourists coming to Boulder City with the reduced traffic that encouraged more spending and more tourists coming here. Another thing we want to highlight, and this is a credit to the citizens of our community, with the opening of I-11, there's been an effort to shop local. And as a result of the information collected, we've seen a positive impact as a result of citizens spending their dollars locally. And so we appreciate their contribution to our local business community. Another measure that we look at as it relates to I-11 impact is our office retail vacancy rate. So this measures the amount of square footage in our office and retail buildings that are currently vacant. As you can see with the chart up here, in Boulder City, currently, the vacancy rate is 4.5%. So 4.5% of the total office and retail space is vacant. That compares favorably to the Las Vegas Valley, which is at 7%. But what is the even more encouraging news is when we compare this to last year's data, the city undertook its first tracking of retail office vacancy in July of 2018, before I-11 opened. And you can see last year, the vacancy rate in Boulder City was 6.5%, so it's dropped 200 basis points to 4.5. Las Vegas also saw a corresponding drop. But it's a very encouraging sign that with the opening of I-11, we have businesses occupying vacant spaces, and we see a drop in the vacancy rate. Want to talk a little bit about code enforcement. We have been working to improve the communication with our residents who submit their code enforcement complaints. And during the past year, we put in place an online form in which citizens can fill out 24/7 any code enforcement concerns. We have on the website a button that talks about reporting a concern. It's on the front page of the city's website. Citizen can click on that, and if it is a concern regarding private property, they fill out one form for that. If it's a concern regarding public property, like a streetlight going out, they fill out another form. Once they submit that form, it's sent to the appropriate staff who are automatically notified and can follow up with a response. If citizens want to provide their contact information, then we will follow up with them to let them know the progress of that concern. Comparing fiscal year 18 to fiscal year 19 as it relates to code enforcement activities, we have seen 115% increase in the number of cases. I attribute that to impart the ability for citizens to let us know about concerns within the community, and specifically with the online reporting form. That translates into 184 cases in fiscal year 19 versus 87 in fiscal year 18. And as you can see on the slide, a 309% increase in online reporting. Besides making it easier for citizens to be able to let us know about property maintenance concerns, the other objective for our department is closing cases. And so I wanted to share with you comparison of the number of closed cases between fiscal year 18 and fiscal year 19. As you can see with the pie chart, the orange is a reflection of the open cases, meaning that at the end of that fiscal year, that percentage of cases were still open and unresolved. And the red is a reflection of closed cases. So for fiscal year 18, we had 72% of the cases closed by the end of the fiscal year, and that is, was increased to 87% within the fiscal year 19. Our final area of responsibility is historic preservation. The council has approved the agreement for certified local government. We have sent that agreement on to the state. The state has green-lighted our application, and is now pending the National Park Service review and consideration. With CLG designation, we are hopeful to apply for a grant to be able to update the 1983 survey of our historic district. So that is a priority. With the direction of the council, from prior meetings, we are engaging the Historic Preservation Committee to have them identify what their priorities are as it relates to historic preservation, and then we will bring those back to the council, and with that, identify the resources needed to be able to successfully implement those initiatives. As I close for questions, I want to say that it's very much been a pleasure to be able to report out to you the activities of the department, and it's done in no short order to the staff of the department. Itzel, Jerian, Mark, Pat, Susan, and Rafi have all been very working, have all been working very hard to serve the needs of the citizens of our community and the businesses of our community, and I'm pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions, comments?
I just want to say that I know that the, in the past, we've done, you know, community outreach, and a lot of the things that the community has addressed, you have addressed here tonight, and I just want to congratulate your staff on. And I just want to congratulate your staff on getting the permit process in order where it's easier for people to work through that. I know that's been a challenge for people in the past, and I know it's been appreciated in the future. I've heard, already heard some good things about permits that I've gone through the new process. Also, that, I just wanted to comment on the reported complaint. I think what I often see from the community is that when there's something that's an emergency, that can't wait for the three-day weekend where there is no staff current, that maybe on the, there'd be a place that they'd be directed to on that. That's a constant thing. Who do I contact, you know, for something that's on a Friday or Saturday, Sunday? So anyways, that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to say thank you. This is apparently a lot of work, and it does address issues that I heard early on. People complaining about permitting process, licensing process, code enforcement. And it's really nice to be able to go out and answer their questions now and say, it looks like some things are getting, getting better. And I think it's really good for the community to know that their complaints and concerns are being taken seriously. That's it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Warren.
Yeah, Michael, in your presentation, the last portion of it, you spoke to the approval of the National Park Service for our application. Can you expand upon that for me, please?
Sure. Even though the city has submitted for CLG or certified local government designation, it does require the National Park Service's approval. It is very encouraging, though, that the state Historic Preservation Office has endorsed our application to the National Park Service. So we're just waiting to hear back from the National Park Service regarding that application.
There's no further information that we need to provide?
No, no.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, thank you very much for the presentation. I think it is very clear that your department covers a whole lot. There's a lot of great work that gets done. One of my questions was regarding, you talked about where some dollars are being spent more. We're seeing more spending at our restaurants and lodging, and then also it said grocery. I was just curious, is that, we have, I believe we have one grocery store, is that all we're counting in that? Are there other things in grocery that are being counted in that as well?
Well, there would be other stores that provide groceries that would be included in that.
Okay. Very good. And then also with that, you know, we're seeing a little bit of a drop in fast food and gas stations. Are there any more that we know of that are coming on, on the way potentially? I mean, I'm, you know, we don't need to point anybody out or anything, but are there concerns that there are more potentially leaving market, that it might be coming, things of that nature that we're looking out for right now?
Well, I can tell you that part of what our Economic Development Coordinator has been doing is engaging the real estate agents that represent vacant spaces, providing information to those brokers to highlight the benefits of attracting restaurants and retailers to the community. But really, it's going to be an ongoing monitoring process to see how these different measures are impacted over time. And we will have more information to share throughout the rest of the year as the information is collected and submitted to the city.
Okay. And then regarding the code enforcement tips and stuff, I had only ever heard of one person mention this, but they had mentioned that they had filed a complaint or code enforcement with the neighbor regarding, I forget the specific issue, but when the person came to address it, they, I guess, they had pointed out that they were the neighbors that had made the complaint. Is that common practice to do that? Like I said, it was only one time, and from the sound of it, that sounded like it had happened a number of years ago, but it was a concern of theirs when the neighbor had continued to do this, but they kind of felt like, well, now I'm a bad neighbor if I continue to cite this. Is that?
That's not the practice to share that information. And so online, when an individual submits a complaint, they have the option of providing their contact information or leaving it anonymous. Certainly, we would keep that information confidential, but they have the ability to submit without providing that information.
And then the last question, just on that code enforcement, how much of that requires action, generally speaking? You know, I'm not looking for a specific number, but is it very often are people, you know, making these frivolous code enforcement things, or is it, does it seem pretty average for what you would expect as we've seen in years past? I know we've seen more cases and seen even more cases closed on it, but what are we looking at about how much actually require action to be taken?
It varies. And in some cases, when the property owner is made aware of the property maintenance concern, they go and quickly address it. In other cases, it does require our code enforcement officer to work with that property owner to bring them into compliance. But I would say a majority are, you know, issues of concern that can be addressed.
All right. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for the job you and your staff has been doing. I think that we've seen a lot of improvements since your arrival here. With regard to the RDA, you know, this is something that I know we had spoken about shortly after you had started. A great job on getting, the former application was 30 some odd pages in length, I believe, and there were a lot of business owners that took one look at the application and said, it's not worth my time. So I think that has been a real benefit to get that streamlined and also having your staff do some of the work with the business owner so that they can do their business rather than filling out applications. So I think that's been great. This grant that has been discussed for historic preservation, I think is, should be a motivator for the businesses that are in the historic district to continue to preserve those buildings. I think that's important for the uptown business community as a whole, not just individual businesses. The RDA funds that we've seen spent over the past couple of years, I believe we can all see the benefits of that. One of the first projects that was done was the former Desert Inn Motel, now the Boulder Inn. That has undergone a wonderful transformation, and they appear to be doing well with their business there. Another project that is moving along are the Boulder Company Stores. Do we have a completion date projected on that, do you know?
We have been discussing with the property owner and their contractor as of today. They're hopeful to be able to open at least a portion of that store within the next six weeks.
Again, I believe that the RDA is something that can help our businesses. When you did refer to the traffic counts, I just want to clarify for people, you had mentioned at Veterans and Boulder City Parkway was where one of the counts was taken, and that was where there was a 30% to 40% drop?
Correct. And, and let me expand a little bit on that for the benefit of the public. So what NDOT does is they put strips down across the highway, and they count what is called average daily trips, ADT. It's the number of vehicles that pass during a given day. They do it for a week, and then they come up with the average. And so at Boulder City Parkway and Veterans Memorial, that saw the 30% to 40% drop in traffic for that week comparison in April between 2018 and 2019. The other location is closer to I-11 interchange with Highway 93 at the far eastern end of town. So one at the west end, one at the east end.
So we're referring to near Hoover Dam Lodge, then?
Correct.
Okay.
And so we believe one of the reasons for the differential and the drop in traffic counts ties back into the data we're receiving from Visa View, that we have tourists, visitors that are coming through Boulder City Parkway, coming through the community to get to Lake Mead and to Hoover Dam. And so that's why the drop hasn't been as significant there. Whereas, traffic that is near Hoover Dam Lodge, that is the traffic that is heading straight to Arizona and vice versa.
Okay. Thank you. And lastly, we saw the numbers on code enforcement. I believe one of the figures was a 309% increase. That physician currently is part-time with that person, also doing other duties. I believe he helps Chief Shea with the coordination of volunteers for the police department as well.
Correct. The physician spends 50% of its time with community development, providing code enforcement, and the other 50% with the police department, coordinating the police department volunteers.
So Pat's busy, then, I'm guessing?
Pat is very busy, yes.
Okay. And I've, I've heard many compliments about the work he's done, both for the police department and in the code enforcement area. Again, I thank you very much. I think that things are improving in many different ways there. The CLG status for historic preservation, getting going on a survey of the existing district, looks to me to be step one. So that, I believe, will be very important for us. I appreciate you and your staff's efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number 15, then. This is a matter pertaining to the appeal of the Planning Commission denial of a variance request to permit a gate across a private street at a maximum height of eight feet, six inches. This is a public hearing on the appeal and potential determination on the appeal.
Thank you, Mayor. City code prohibits the erection of gates across public and private streets. Mr. Gambino erected a gate across Red Baron Lane without a building permit earlier this year. He submitted an application seeking variance, both from the prohibition for gates across public and private streets, as well as the height of the gate. The gate is 8.6 feet high and the maximum is six feet. On June 19th, the Planning Commission held their public hearing to consider Mr. Gambino's request and voted three to two to deny the variance. Mr. Gambino submitted a request to appeal the Planning Commission's decision to the city council, the reason for tonight's public hearing. So for council's consideration this evening is the public hearing to consider the appeal and city, excuse me, and city council deliberation whether to affirm or reverse the decision of the Planning Commission. Regardless of the city council's determination, it must be supported by established findings. Staff has provided findings in the staff report, both with affirming or reversing the decision of the Planning Commission. Because of a family emergency, Mr. Gambino is currently out of the country and is unable to attend tonight's hearing and has requested a continuance to the September 10th city council meeting. I've conferred with the city attorney, and we believe the council has two options to consider this request. You may proceed with holding the public hearing, deliberate on the appeal, and vote this evening regarding the appeal in absentia of his presence. Or you may hold the public hearing this evening and continue the council's deliberation to September 10th. And with that, I will answer any questions.
Council, any questions?
Yeah, real quick. So Mr. Gambino talked about kind of the unique situation of these homes in a commercial area, and these are, these are in a zoned commercial area, is that correct?
Correct. It is Zone C2.
Okay. And was that by approval of the Planning Commission, by the council? How did that kind of come to be?
So in certain commercial districts like the C2, one of the conditional uses that is permitted is residential. So what it says is that if you grant the conditional use for residential in the R3, which is for multifamily development, then that development has to comply with all the regulations of the R3 zone, even though it is Zone C2.
Okay.
Madam City Clerk, I'm going to ask a procedural question. Should we take a consensus of the council as to whether we want to go into detailed questions about this at this time, or have a discussion of whether we would prefer to continue this after hearing from the public to that second meeting in September?
You can certainly do that. There's no, no problem with that.
You know, my concern is that if, if the only thing that we decide to continue, if we decide to continue it, is that we would have no context at that next meeting if we're doing all of our questioning at this point. So I'm not sure, that's why I was asking, you know, is it proper to poll the council and see what they would like to do?
Absolutely, that's proper. But I would also say, if, based on the backup material, if you don't feel that the appellant has anything else to offer that would make you change your mind...
And I, I think that needs to be part of this discussion of what the council would like to do. Mr. City Attorney, you agree?
I do. I do, Mayor. So you can certainly have that deliberation now amongst council to determine whether or not you would grant the request for continuance. Because if, as has been said, if, if there's something that the council would like to hear from the applicant, and, you know, you, you would want to make that known now, right, between the council members. If not, and you feel there's, again, nothing left to add, then make that determination.
All right. Why don't we come to that conclusion, then? Any comments from council as far as whether they prefer or feel it necessary to have a continuance?
I do not feel it's necessary to have a continuance.
I would question, how many people are at, in the council chambers that are prepared to speak on public hearing?
Well, we will, we will still...
Because I don't believe they have knowledge that Mr. Gambino is not going to be here and a consideration would be delayed, so being inconvenienced for them. So maybe you could see a show of hands for people that were going to speak on this issue.
Councilman Haray, I, I believe that whether we continue this or not, we're able to receive any public comment at tonight's hearing without asking anyone to come back at a later time. And we can review those remarks, should we decide for the continuance, or we can just continue with a public hearing tonight and come to a conclusion. So we're not looking to inconvenience any members of the public that may be here to comment on it tonight. They can make those comments, and whether we arrive at a conclusion or not, that information can still be received by council.
That's fine.
Any other comments, Councilman Haray?
No.
Councilman Adams?
Um, as much as I really would like to hear from the appellant about some of his reasonings for this, just in reviewing this, I was at the Planning Commission meeting that night when they went over this. I'm, I'm just not sure that I couldn't find any reason to allow this, given, given our ordinances. So that's where I'm at. I would be interested in hearing from him, but I, I'm not sure that that would really make a difference at this point.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Haray?
I do have an additional comment, since we're talking about the actual item here. Is one, I think this typifies a trend that I've seen develop among folks who find it easier to ask for forgiveness than to apply for permission. That's number one. The other thing that I was disturbed about... The other thing that I was disturbed about was when our code enforcement officer informed the installer that they were in non-compliance and that he should cease and assist. And instead of doing that, they completed the installation. So those are two very telling things that are not in my favor of doing this. The other issue is, in reading some of those affidavits, they're talking about a fear for crime. And to my knowledge, there is no such crime nest on Red Baron Road.
Councilman Haray? Councilman Haray?
And the fact that the complaint was people crawling over the walls from McDonald's to get into their backyards, well, the fence is not going to stop that.
Councilman Haray, could I interrupt you just for a moment? Right now, I would like to see if we can keep the discussion on council to whether we should continue this after the hearing from the public, or go into deliberating the appeal itself. So if right now, we could restrict it to just conversation about whether to go ahead with this tonight, or go ahead, hearing from the public, and then a continuation to the meeting in September. Thank you. Do you have any preference on whether to conclude this tonight, or continue, hear from the public tonight, and then continue this until September?
My preference would be to have the hearing tonight.
Thank you. Councilwoman Folda, any comment?
I would like to hear that any public that, that have come here tonight to talk about that. My only concern with this is legally that, that the applicant was notified, has all notices done, so that, you know, if, if we go forth with this without him being here, that there's not a later replication to the city.
Mr. City Attorney?
So the applicant was notified that there would be a duly noticed public hearing that would take place today, hence the request to continue that. And so you absolutely have the discretion to move forward tonight with that public hearing. There is an opportunity to seek judicial review irrespective of what happens, whether it be tonight or in September. And so, again, that's, that's, falls under the purview of the applicant as to what they would like to do at that point. But, again, there was an opportunity to either be present or have someone come and speak on the applicant's behalf.
And just to clarify too, this process is defined as far as the number of days the applicant has to appeal the Planning Commission decision, and then when that appeal is to be heard by city council.
That is correct. That is correct. Forty-five days.
So we're, we're following what is in our code.
We are. We absolutely are following it.
And the appellant has been notified of the meeting tonight. Was there a response prior to, or in response to that notification?
The applicant submitted an email to our city staff on Saturday. They knew about tonight's hearing, they were planning to attend, but because of a family emergency, they had to leave the country. So that's when they had asked for the continuation, that they wouldn't be back until the beginning of September, hence the request for September 10th.
Thank you. Well, based on feedback from council, Councilman Adams?
Yeah, I just wanted to make, kind of just clarify, as, as much as I'm not sure whether anything can be said that would change my mind, I, I do feel it would be fair, given the extenuating circumstances, to allow him to at least come before I know that it's not necessarily required to, but I just do want to make sure that that, that I'm being clear, that I feel that way.
Well, then, we'll poll again. Councilwoman Bridges, do you feel that there's a need to continue this after hearing from the public to the second meeting in September?
I do not.
Councilwoman Folda?
I do like to continue until September.
Councilman Haray?
I think we have enough information to make a decision after public hearing.
Okay, I guess that comes down to me then. You know, I prefer to allow citizens to speak on their behalf, so I will also favor postponement until the 21st for input from the citizen. But we will go ahead to hear from the public. If there are any members of the public that wanted to speak on this particular appeal, please step forward.
Thank you for asking me. I happen to be the president of an association, have been the president for 16 years. We follow the rules and regulations. We've asked this question on two separate occasions when we thought about having gated communities. We were told no. We follow those rules and regulations. I think if this person could have gotten an attorney to represent him, or someone else, and I feel that you should deny this and make him take it out. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak with regard to this appeal? Mr. Fann?
Sorry about turning it off. I think you should go ahead and go through with it. Just as far as I'm concerned, it's just another delay. He's been told not to have this thing since February, so now he's getting another month of thumb of his nose. Those gates are closed crossing that street. He was told that he was supposed to just to open, to leave them open. He's not, so he's getting another month of closed gates and stuff like that. I think you're kicking a can down the road on something. The Planning Commission decided with support of staff. Sounds like from your conversations, you guys are pretty much already in agreement that it should be a no-go. So I don't see a reason to kick it down the can, or kick the can down the road. I mean, you know, just, just get another month, another month of thumb of his nose at the city and the city staff and everything, so, just my two cents.
Mr. Shane?
Judy DeShane, I did some checking, you know, in his statements, he says he owns both properties. I did some checking on Google, and it went to Redfin and Zillow and Realtor.com, and all three of those show that 1317, the inside premises is still up for sale. So he hasn't purchased it yet, so I'm going to guess that as long as we, you let him have the gate, then he'll purchase it and maybe rent it out or whatever, I have no idea. But it's, you know, he has said he owns them both, and he clearly doesn't, at least from what I could find on the internet today. So you really wonder what, what the whole thing is, and, and both, you know, and both of them say, no, it's not a gated community. And it says there's no HOA. So it's just a matter of four homes there and everybody does their own thing, which is fine. That's up to them, but not when it comes to a gate across the street. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, I'll close the public hearing then. Madam City Clerk, do we need a motion then to continue? Mr. City Attorney?
I'll make a motion to continue the conversation or the, this item at the September 10th date?
About a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, four to one. We will continue this then until the September meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mays. Hey, item 16 is a budget amendment for restoring the money that had been budgeted for the historic preservation planner to the general fund, or to the budget.
Good evening. Diane Pelletier, Boulder City Finance Director. At the July 9th council meeting, the council voted to remove the position of historic preservation officer from the budget, and Resolution 6975 does that. I'll answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions at this time?
So providing there are funds, we could at a later date add this back to the budget?
Yes.
At a later date?
Mm-hmm.
Or the money could be spent elsewhere, is that correct?
Yes.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. I believe this is a wrong move, and I made that clear last council meeting. I understand that this is a perfunctory thing that is tied to that element, but I want to remind everyone, any piece of literature, any look up on the internet, any reference to the city of Boulder City cannot be read without the word historic or history being a part of it. It's so ingrained in one of the elements of the city's offerings to the public, is that it is a part of our strategic plan. The fact that the person who was, would be hired, would perform additional duties, and would have qualifications to assist in the other professional areas, specifically as a registered professional engineer, made the difference for me in changing my mind regarding the ability of this person to be added. The other element is, it goes counter to what seems to be the general move to bring outside contractors or jobs into house, as opposed to using outside contractors. So it goes against that. That being said, I would think that we're, would like to revisit this at the time that the National Park Service, if they approve our application, I think it's time then to take a look at this a second time. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll make a comment. I just kind of want to discuss a little bit of where my head was when we started to move for this, start to remove this position. It's not that I don't believe that Boulder City shouldn't have a historic preservation planner, perhaps at some point. I think that it's right now, it would be a little bit of putting the cart before the horse. When I looked at other cities who had historic preservation officers or historic preservation planners, looking in the history of how that position came to be in those cities, they almost all started off with outside contractors coming in or consultant work, and then after a number of years, setting up what that workload was going to be and understanding a bit more of what they were going to have to tackle, then that position was, was later created. I, I was just at the previous Historic Preservation Committee meeting, and I think it's very promising, some of the conversations that they're having right now. And I absolutely think that we are heading in the right direction, especially considering the conversation that was being had just at the last meeting. They'll be continuing that conversation at their upcoming meeting. And so I do think that this is the appropriate direction right now. That doesn't mean that later on, be it next year, the year after, that we can't move in this direction, but I do think that right now, this is the correct step in making sure that when we talk about historic preservation, that we're doing it in the right way. Because failure to do so in the right way, we could lose the history if things aren't set up in just, in just the right way. So I want to make sure that we have a plan in place, that we have a policy in place before we start talking about a full-time paid position that will last for a long time. So that's where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just, I have a comment. I just want to speak to, you know, the, the resources that we currently have with the Historic Preservation Committee. They are a very educated group who have a lot to offer, and I think that we can utilize them in a way that would help us move forward with historic preservation. The study that was done on the historic district was done back in the 80s. I have a copy of my house picture from that. And there's a lot of things that have not been updated since ever, so, in 20 years plus. So I think that having this position now is, is too soon as well. I think that the committee is moving in the right direction. This new, you know, we're getting, exciting to hear what the parks have to say about us joining with them. So I think that we are still moving towards historic preservation, and that we can do it in a more fiscally responsible way.
And you thought you were just coming up here to say you wanted to put money back in the budget, right?
[laughing].
Well, since everyone...
I'm listening.
Yeah. Since everyone else has commented, I'll, I'll go ahead and comment as well. I had written a column in the newspaper a couple weeks ago regarding my reasoning for this. This position was going to cost the city about $120,000 a year. As Councilwoman Folda has just said, and Councilman Adams regarding our existing Historic Preservation Committee, there are people on there that have the ability to do research, that have qualifications in the area of preservation. I believe that we've not taken advantage of the skills that we've had in that, on that committee. I served on that committee. At that time, we still had people on there that had backgrounds in architecture. We had an individual who chaired the committee, who was an employee of the federal government, whose background was in archaeology and determining cultural type of aspects, was very knowledgeable on the park service guidelines. I feel that that's something that's often overlooked, that somehow we're designing historic preservation here in Boulder City. As has been mentioned earlier tonight about the certified local government status, that's a determination made by the National Park Service. And the National Park Service is really the foundation of historic preservation guidelines in the United States. That is what determined that we have a historic district here in Boulder City. So I think that the back and forth, I know when this position was first considered, Councilman Haray and I opposed it at that time. I know that when it was discussed during our strategic plan, I spoke out against including that in the plan because I didn't feel it was necessary. I believe Councilman Adams had said earlier, there may come a point in time where a position like that would be necessary. I agree with that. The talk of how consultants are going to cost more, or the movement we have is to bring everything in-house, that's not true. We have brought several activities or positions in-house, but we still go out to consultants. We go out to consultants a lot. And the reason we do that is because we're a community of 16,000 people, and we can't afford to have a person on staff who is an expert at every possible situation that we're going to come into as a city. In this case, I believe that we will save money for the residents, but not only that, we can accomplish an awful lot of this work that we already know what needs to be done. There's a state Historic Preservation Office here in Nevada. They've already assisted us in some of these processes. The Park Service, we happen to have a Park Service headquarters where, I think it's the third national, third largest national park visitation-wise in the United States. So it's not that we're without resources here, we just need to employ those resources a little better. So this money can go back into the budget at this point, and I believe at that time, we can then decide how best to use it. That will conclude my remarks and...
I do. I'd like to put in my two cents. I feel that we have a lot of commissions and committees in this town, and I think in some cases, they're underutilized. And I would like more feedback from them, more opportunity to know what's going on inside of them beyond just coming to the meeting. And I felt, I felt like I didn't want to speak about this because I made my, my thoughts clear the last time this came up. That is putting the cart before the horse, that we do have this committee of educated people who can put us in the right direction, that there are other issues that need to be dealt with before we put in somebody to take care of them. I felt it was down the line that we should have one, but now is not the time. I know that the Airport Commission is, they have consultants working with them right now. And I agree that... now, and I agree that we bring in people with necessary skills on a short-term basis, and then when we feel like it's time to do that, we will. But I, I think there are a lot of people willing to do that work right now, that we don't have to hire another person.
Last call to put the money back in the budget. Thank you, Mrs. Palatier, I appreciate that. And there's no action required, correct?
There isn't action.
I would, I would like to...
Okay, one more.
I know public comment is not required, but I would be interested if there are any more. I know I often like to wait until hearing the discussion and deliberation before I would comment, so...
At Mr. Adams' request, we'll open this up for public comment then. Ms. Barnett, you have your hand up?
I have no comment.
That's good, thank you, Councilman. Linda Barnett, I'm going to shorten what I was scribbling to get to the end. Similar to a $40 million pool, this position is not what the logical people of Boulder City would support. It doesn't make sense at this time. Just quoting everyone, it is the cart before the horse. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Ms. DeShane?
Yeah, I do have a comment, actually.
Currently, Councilman Haray, we're in public comment. We'll give you an opportunity to speak when we're finished with that.
There's no video, that's why I'm kind of hampered here.
Judy DeShane, hey, Warren. I would, I would agree with Linda right now. I too, I've, I've been going to the historic preservation meetings for a long time, for well over a year. I rarely miss one. And this last one, where they, you know, knew that they were going to be able to put together a list, give it to the council, and have something done. You saw so much more enthusiasm there. So I would like to see it put off, let's see, let these people, they've worked hard for a long time, give them a chance to put their ideas forward, so you can consider them, and let's see where it goes. So I would prefer to wait before we actually spend another $100,000 a year and ongoing.
Anyone else? Hey, seeing no one other than those who've spoken. Mr. Haray, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
No, that's all right. I'll, I'll wait.
Last call. Anyone else? Hey, do we have a motion then?
I will. I'd like to motion to amend the fiscal year 2019-2020 General Fund Operations Budget to remove the funding for the Historical Preservation Officer.
I'll second that. We just need a motion to approve the resolution. I'll second that.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay, on principle.
Four to one then, with Mr. Haray opposing that?
Yes.
We'll then move to item number 17. This was an item that I had requested, but we have the expert sitting right here, our finance director, Ms. Palatier, if you'd like to speak to this issue?
I provided a staff report just summarizing what we have done internally since I've gotten here. Just a little background, I came here in January of 2018, and soon after getting here was, was told and got the feeling very quickly that more transparency was desired by the public. So, in, in April, I attended a conference of our Tyler Technology, which has Munis software, which is what the city uses. So I was trying to learn as much as I could, as quickly as I could, about how Boulder City works. So at this conference, I saw there was a, a session on transparency software, very nice, it's, I knew that was a priority for the city, and attended the, the session, and was very impressed with the software, which is called Socrata, and Tyler Technologies had recently purchased that software. So, I left that conference last April thinking, this is what Boulder City needs, but at that time, I really didn't have ample staff to even, you know, contemplate doing this because I had no one that could do it, I was new. But since that time, we've started getting some, filling some positions, and now that I have some staff and we are getting our house in order, this is a project we want to undertake. And the computer service contract for the city on, in May, at the end of May, was ready to be renewed. So we've been working with Tyler Technologies to review all of the software that the city uses, because that, another thing I had heard was that we were probably paying for software that we probably weren't using or utilizing. So we did go through that software, and at the next meeting, you'll have a, a little presentation on, on that and what the result of that review was. So we've taken out software and then have added this new package to our software. And I think we have an example, if, is Brock still here? We did ask for some samples for them to send us so I could show it off, I guess, to the council and to the city manager. So, there was like four samples sent to us, and Radnor, Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania is, sorry, it's getting late, you know?
That's the Massachusetts coming out of it.
Yeah, a little bit. When I get tired, it really comes out. Radnor, Pennsylvania is very similar size to Boulder City. So, that's why I chose that one, and anyone that has a computer can go online and go to their, their website and get on this, this application and play with it. But I just want to show a couple of things that it could do. So with that, that's where they would go, to the township of Radnor, residents, and there's an open finance button, and once they would push that button, they're in open finance. So at the top of the, yes, checkbook, that would be an area, I'm told, is probably of interest to many citizens. So if you're sitting at home having coffee and you feel like looking at the Boulder City checkbook, you can go on your application, once it's installed. This is, of course, the Pennsylvania sample, but you'll be able to go in there and look at various things, and it might take a while to understand and find what you're looking for, but I think it's a pretty user-friendly system. And for instance, in this one, that is the checkbook, and you decide you want to look at capital outlay, so you could click on the capital outlay, which will then put you in a screen where you can see the projects being done in Radnor. And you can say, okay, let's look at the police, for instance. And once you open that and you go down on the screen a little bit, that's the checkbook. So those are samples of checks that have been paid for capital projects for the police department. So I would think you could push, you know, push the button on one of those, and it'll give you more detail of maybe what, what it was for. But the whole idea of this is for citizens to be able to go online and to look at various areas of information that interest them, and of course, let us know if they have questions or areas that they have concerns. You know, I would expect that people may have concerns when they look at something just from, you know, not understanding what it's about, so I'm sure there'll be a lot of communication generated by people looking at this, but this is part of our goal, is to make things transparent. Going back to the front page, as most folks know, we've had an executive summary for our budget and executive capital improvement plan summaries. I think we will put that down at the bottom of the page, and we could also use this to highlight any specific projects that may be the public, let's just say we end up getting a new pool. That could be a highlighted project on this site where people could go in and look at the checks paid on the pool project, things like that. So I can see this, this being very helpful to the citizens. I can see a lot of suggestions and requests for additional information being put on there, but I'm very excited about it. We're hoping you approve the renewal contract at the next meeting that includes the software. Our goal is to try to have it implemented by January 1st, which is a very aggressive goal, because we have many projects going on, and there may have to be some changes made to the way we account for things so it'll fit nicely into the software and answer the questions. But that's, that's where we're headed with this. So I hope this helps your item of discussion.
Okay. Could you say once again that was Radnor, Pennsylvania, R-A-D-N-O-R?
Yes. And you type in Radnor, Pennsylvania, and then go to residents, and then open finance.
Okay.
Then it'll be there for you to play with.
If anybody wants to get a preview of it, they can look there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Counsel, any comments or questions?
I, I think it's amazing. I was very glad to hear during the briefing that it was not a matter of re-entering data, that it interfaced with the current accounting systems and so on. I'm looking at the Radnor Township right now, and I think it would be amazing to have something like this. The, it would be a function of cost, but it does seem to answer some of the issues of transparency, because that has been something that, that seemed to be talked about quite frequently, that my experience over the last year, of having information available to residents of Boulder City and not have to feel like things are being done in a black box and not, not having certainty about why decisions are made.
Yeah, I'll just echo Counselwoman Bridge's comments. I think it's, I think it's awesome when, when you were giving the presentation during the briefing, I was kind of like, whoa, this is, it's really, it's really something, and I think it, like you said, it is user-friendly, maybe not everybody has the technical knowledge about exactly how these things work, but I think when I was going through it, it was pretty clear. I understood exactly what the information was that it was giving to me. So I think it will be a, a great tool for the community once it is online.
And just to add something to that, they won't be going into the Munis software that we're working with on a daily basis. This, this is a bridge program, so our information will, will go into that, that template that we set up for Boulder City. So if somebody's in there and like, oh my God, I think I'm messing something up, they could just close it and reopen it, but it's not going to do anything to our information.
Great.
And also the fact that individual data is secure, social security numbers, addresses, names, and, and...
That will be part of the information that we'll have to carefully look at before we, you know, set up all the, the bridges to get it into the software to make sure we don't, we're not exposing information that we're not supposed to expose.
Another question. So for the public's information that what we are paying for software currently and what software's we're not using, that money can go towards and cover the cost of this new software?
Just about. It's pretty close, a few thousand dollar difference.
Okay. And then, does this also cover website design, or how does that get onto the actual website? So they're our own city website, and does that cover that?
How it will connect to our website? I think that's part of the implementation, that the team that comes in and helps us will, will address that part of it too.
Okay.
I'd like to know how they address privacy and security issues.
Well, I think that's part of the implementation, we'll be carefully looking at everything that, that we're going to be offering the public. So there'll be, there'll be certain doors we won't go beyond, and that'll, I'm sure that's part of, the, the team that will come in to help us do this will, I guess, make suggestions of you don't want to go this far, or, you know, make sure your information is, is clean of, of personal information. So we'll be, it, you know, may take longer than, than by January, but, but my staff is pretty excited about doing this, and we're going to try to get it done. And I'm sure, if I don't, maybe it'll only be partially done by January, but we're hoping to at least have the ball rolling and have that information available, some of it anyway.
Any other questions, Councilman Haray?
No, that's the two issues I'd be concerned with.
Thank you. I appreciate you doing the work on this. Again, the reason I had put this request out there is I do feel it will give a great deal of transparency. These are the types of questions I often get from people. I don't have access to your database, and, and I don't want access to your database. But having this tool, type of tool available, I think, is, is going to be something that the public will appreciate. Also, we're not reinventing any wheels here. This company has been around a long time. Although we're using Radnor, Pennsylvania as an example, this is deployed in many places, as I, I believe, correct?
It was four sites that they gave me as samples. So yes, there was other larger cities and one that was actually smaller too, one in Alaska, but I can't remember which, what the name of it is right now. But there was also larger areas. So I think, I think they can make it fit whatever the city is.
And the city's been using this, I know you call it Tyler, but everyone else calls it Munis. I mean, Tyler's the company name, but Munis is the application.
Yes.
The city's been using that how long now?
I believe since 2016 or 13, somewhere around there, early teens.
Okay. Well, again, I appreciate your efforts in looking into this, and if we can get it to work, I'll, I'll buy you some favors for New Year's Eve if you think you're going to get it going by then, so...
Ooh, okay. Challenge accepted.
Thank you. All right, item number 18 now. Discussion regarding a creation of a special committee to look into the possibility of repair or replacement of the municipal pool. Again, this was an item that I had requested be placed on the agenda. The conversation that has occurred over going back close to two years, we know that the existing pool is 40 years old. It suffers frequent breakdowns. I received a call from a citizen today, apparently the pool was closed down again. That has been happening fairly often. The equipment's getting old. I mean, that happens when equipment gets old, it starts to fail. The question that was put forward, asking the voters for up to $40 million in bonds, was rejected by 72%. The question regarding funds from the Capital Improvement Fund was also rejected, but by a lesser number, at 59%. My reason for asking for this is I believe it would serve the community best to have folks that have specific knowledge about things like finance, construction, swimming, be devoted to this. I understand we have a Parks and Rec Committee that has been functioning for many, many years here in Boulder City, but I'm not sure that we have the type of expertise that might be necessary, especially when it comes to financial questions. I know that the city manager is also working on some possibilities for financing that may not require property tax increase, or certainly not the request that was being made. But I also think that we need to take a look at this in the light of not what the users of the pool would most want if they could get what they wanted, but we need to look at this, you know, what are the taxpayers willing to pay? If we look at it from that point of view, I think then we would get a lot more support within the community as far as what they would like to see spent on a project like this. At $40 million, I don't know of any other single public works project that the city has ever taken on that approaches that amount. And that certainly is something I heard from the voters, leading up to the election where this was put to the voters. The project just was of a scale that was not suitable for Boulder City. So the, the purpose of putting this request out there is to get a committee that would focus primarily on the financing of the question, but also the scale of this project, also what is necessary for not only our swim team, but... Also, what is necessary for not only our swim team, but our senior population, or just folks who like to go down and use the pool once in a while. When I look back at how that pool came to be, it was originally built somewhere in the early '60s, seems to me around '62 or so. It was the individual pool and the small waiting pool. The diving pool was built some, I don't know, 15, 18 years later. The racquetball courts were built even after that. And the pools only opened about three or four months out of the year. It was not covered. So it was only open during the summer months. And over time, improvements were made to the project to get it to where it's at now, but that took a long time to get there. And I think that's another possibility we need to look at, is do we need a phased project rather than trying to invest all of the money that a project like this might take upfront? Are there things that aren't necessary at this time that maybe five years down the road or 10 years down the road get added on later? So the purpose of this, and I have spoken with Councilman Adams about this, Councilman Adams was on the high school swim team.
Not high school.
Did you win any medals?
No, no. I did it through, I believe, middle school, so...
Okay. But he does have some background in that. You know, comments that were made earlier tonight about alliance members and favoritism and this and that kind of thing. I think it's necessary to remind the community that when people start talking about things happening out of the public view, the law, the public law is very clear about that. And what it primarily is talking about is financial advantage, not advantage to the community, not advantage to any particular individual, but financial advantage. So to talk about the community alliance as though that's some group out there that has some influence over anyone on this council, there is no financial influence, there is no membership to the alliance that I'm aware of. There are no dues paid, there's no funds raised, there's none of that that occurs that I'm aware of. And it certainly is a false premise to try and make an equivocation that any member of council who might go to someone they know has a particular background or expertise and say, would you be interested in serving on a committee like this? And somehow equate that with a council member who might be a Realtor and goes to a developer and says, hey, I'd like to get you on the planning commission so we can get some stuff moved through there. Those are two totally different things. And I think it's very important to make that distinction so that people understand that all of us as council members are free to go and talk to the public. We do not have our hands fastened to our sides when it comes to that, and the public has every right to come and talk to us. It's when you start talking about financial gain that you run into a problem. And that's not the situation here. What we're looking for is the best solution for this community and not for financial gain. So those aspersions aside, this will be open to the public if it's agreed to. That's certainly my plan, and I think that's the law. I don't think we have any choice in that. So my view of this would be that to have Councilman Adams and I serve on this committee and then have anywhere between five and seven members of the community be selected by the council to also serve on it with a real concentration on what their expertise is, what their knowledge is, that they could bring to the process here. So with that said, I'll go ahead and open this up for a comment from other members of the council.
That's a comment.
Mr. Haray, go ahead.
Yeah. Has there been any polling of the current Parks and Rec Commission in terms of what their actual expertise is? I would imagine that there are at least some participants in the existing Parks and Rec Commission that are familiar with repair, construction, and financing, and could lend their input as well as the history because there's been voluminous documentation and reports and designs and so forth that exist already for the proposed pool and the condition of the current pool. And I guess I have to ask Mr. Hall whether there's enough people with that skills, with those skills that are necessary, existing in the existing Parks and Rec Committee, rather than form a new one. But if a new one was found to be necessary, I think it's almost mandatory that some of those members of that committee should come from the Parks and Rec Commission or Committee. That's my comment.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah. I had a couple of comments. I made notes about this would be an ad hoc committee, that it would have a singular purpose, and a beginning and a middle and an end. And I thought there needed to be a finance...that we would stress the finance perspective as opposed to engineering and structural. These are just my thoughts. Because it wasn't a question of what we wanted, it was a question of how much it was going to cost and what the financing was going to look like. And certainly, it would have to be people who were...this is an area of interest for them. I come from a marketing and finance background, and it was really easy to find out what people wanted in their granola bar. You can ask people what the research study on what you think a perfect granola bar is. But even more important is how much are you willing to pay for that granola bar? You know, and what the features and benefits are with respect to that. And that's what I didn't seem to hear in any of the presentations that I was privy to, was really a stress on, yes, are you willing to pay some? And...but not, how much would you think it should cost and where do you think that money would come from and what would you be willing to put into it? And also, I like the idea of a pool with component parts, you know, that over time, something you could be added on to, and not necessarily the whole thing at once. So that's it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll make a couple of comments. When Mayor McManus approached me about the possibility of maybe, you know, forming a committee, we, you know, we kind of discussed what do we think would be best for the community? And to kind of address public comment at the beginning of the night, you know, the whole idea of creating a committee would be so that these conversations are happening in the open, that conversations are happening in accordance with open meeting laws, so that people can see what is being discussed, what is being deliberated. I understand there is a concern from different members of the community about other different groups, you know, having, you know, them coming to some conclusion and then some shadowy way it ends up up here. We want to...I certainly want to avoid that appearance at all costs. Obviously, by having a committee, a separate committee forming, there's a lot that goes into it, you know. We wouldn't...being subject to open meeting law does limit, you know, who you can talk to about which items before they come on the agenda, certain things like that. So it is limiting in certain aspects, but I believe the benefits that it provides to the community greatly outweigh some of those things. Because I think the last thing we need moving forward on this pool is having people not feel confident once again in how we got to where this is. Because sooner or later, this pool's got to get fixed, or we got to get a new pool, or we're not going to have a pool. And that's...we just can't have that. With regards to...I just lost my train of thought right there. I just...I do think it is really important with regards to the Parks and Rec Commission that we do have, they do a lot of hard work, they do a lot of great work, and they were involved in the previous process with the pool where we got to. And this certainly is not any criticism on their, the job that they did, because they were doing a whole lot of other things. But, you know, we did try that approach last time, and, you know, here we are, you know, now. And I think we need to be sure that we're at least trying something new. That's why I feel this would be of benefit, you know. We have to try something. So that's where I'm at on it. As to my ability on the swim team, it was never very...I did not do too well. My sister was the one who did really, really well. Like I said, I think I was in their elementary school and middle school was my time in there, and I don't think they would have wanted me much longer anyways, so...
My turn? Okay.
Your turn.
I absolutely think this would be a great thing because it would be a focused group on this one item. This is a big expense for our city. This is a big project that hasn't been undertaken like this in a long time in our town. I think that having a committee that would have volunteers that would apply, just like any other commissioner committee, where that's, you know, open public and that, I think there is, you know, there's a time essence where, you know, we do have other committees that can't put as much time as they need to towards this. We have a pool that's failing, and, you know, my daughter has swum at the pool, and we've had about half of our lessons canceled last month because of pool pump issues. It's happening more and more often. And if we do take on any debt, it has to go to the vote. And I believe the next time we vote is in November of 2020. And so we do need to have something prepared if we're planning on going forward with this in time for next fall of next year. And I think that, you know, regarding public going out on their own and researching and finding information and showing that with council, they have every right to, to share their expertise and to gather information on their own. That doesn't give council any financial gain. It helps our city as a whole when we all come together and look for solutions to issues that we have. The voters made it very clear that they don't want to spend this kind of money. They don't want to have their property taxes raised. And so that we need to come up with a way that we can have this facility in a financially fiscal way for, you know, our...for our citizens, that they can enjoy this and our future generations can enjoy this pool. So, you know, I'm very for having, you know, a more focus on this item that one committee can take on and just focus on this item. And that's my thoughts on that.
Thank you. You know, a couple of other clarifications, too, and I think it's been somewhat mentioned. You know, this is being framed by some as an attack on our existing Parks and Rec Committee. It is not. I respect any member of the community that serves on any of our committees for putting in the time that they do. But I believe Councilman Adams had mentioned it, that they're covering a wide range of things. And my proposal here is that we obtain a committee from the community that is very focused on this one project. It is, in my view, a very important project for the community. It's also a very expensive project for the community. Any other comments from council?
Yes. I have a problem with the...in the proposed formation, it indicated two members of council would be members of this committee. I think in every case that we have had individuals serving on committees or commissions, there's been a vote by council, a nomination and election process. Not saying anything against the two proposed individuals, but I think we're missing that step, and I'd rather see that process retained rather than in the future have other appointments by fiat as opposed by a nomination and election.
Well, just to respond to that, Councilman Haray, there is no proposal right now that we're about to vote on that would do that. My proposal is based on a flexible number of people to serve on this committee, also to include two council members. It's my idea is one, and Councilman Adams also has some experience with competitive swimming. But that's not the proposal now, and it never was the proposal. It's a suggestion that we're going to hopefully work towards, but the council will decide who is on the committee if we get to that point. So let's not read too much into this. Currently, I put forth a proposal with some possible solutions being discussed, but I've not put forward anything to say that that's how it's going to happen. Any other comments?
I did have a...
Well, my only comment is it is in the memorandum, and one would read the memorandum and see that stated. And then tonight, the comment about basically yourself and Mr. Adams, and I have no objection to either one being the two individuals, and that's how I took that information. If I'm in error, I apologize, but that's the way it came across.
Well, I'm just trying to confirm that at this point, there is no motion at all. This is part of a discussion. Mr. Adams, you had something?
I just had a question to one of Councilmember Haray's response to having a member of the Parks and Recs Commission on this committee. Would that be permissible?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I've been told that if you were to serve on another committee, it would require resignation.
No, the only committee that requires that is Planning Commission. Planning Commission is the only commission that is the only volunteer board you can serve on. All other committees and commissions do not have that in their rules.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions or comments? All right. I will make a motion at this time. The purpose of this was for possible direction to city staff. So my motion would be to request the city attorney and the city clerk to take a look at the resolution that would create a committee containing two council members and up to seven members of the public, that would be an ad hoc committee with a sunset of 12 months.
I'll second that.
I'm giving staff an opportunity to jot some things down.
Okay.
Also, that the committee would be based on selections by a majority of council from volunteers, using our normal process of voter data or volunteer data sheet being submitted And that the committee would meet at least monthly. And for city staff to assign support or a liaison. And I'll stop now.
Just before...did you want to...can I call for a second? Or can you call for a second, please? But I do have a question.
Oh, a second?
Thank you. Just for some clarification on the membership, you want all nine members of a committee to be...to vote? Or are the two council members going to be like ex officio members?
I'd be fine with making them ex officio.
So the two council members ex officio, seven voting members of an ad hoc committee?
Up to seven, yes.
Up to?
Yes.
Did you want to include any specific requirements for this membership to this committee?
You know, I hesitate to do that because we don't do that with really any of our other committees. You know, we may talk sometime about reviewing and revising our volunteer data sheet to allow people to more clearly state that. But I think when this gets issued, if it gets approved, to let people know, please be specific. They are allowed to submit additional pages with that volunteer data sheet. They are allowed to submit additional pages with that volunteer data sheet, so be as specific as you can about the background that you have, but as far as putting specifics on there, I, I don't want to get too far away from the normal way we run committees in the city.
But you want an emphasis on the financial aspect, correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Financial and construction, yes.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
I have one comment. I just, the only thing I would want to change this to 12 month and make it more like a 14, just in case, depending on when it, or if it's approved, that we don't run into being short right before an election.
Can we word it in such a way that we, we, the council can extend if necessary? I, I, the reason I would like, and I appreciate your comment about that, yeah, we don't want to say, oh, we almost made it and not be there for the election, but I also want to clarify to the committee, you don't have forever to come up with this decision, so. And, and I think too, that with the deadlines that we will be seeing for ballot questions to be put together, they actually are probably not going to get 12 months.
They are not, and when we have, I wanted to mention that, when we have ballot questions appear on even year, even year ballots, those questions are due to the county in July with full arguments and rebuttals. We start talking about ballot questions at the same point in time as we do for the municipal elections, even though it's so many months off. We will start talking about ballot questions in December, then moving forward, and then the arguments will be done in the spring, just as they are for municipal, full submittal to the county by July.
Okay. But we can word it, you know, in, in reference to Councilwoman Folda's suggestion, that it could be extended by council if necessary?
You would have, you would have that discretion anyway, is the council. You, you could continue that. You could say 12 months now and down the road, you could bring that back and, and extend it if, if you deem necessary.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous decision then? We'll move on to item number 19, which is coincidentally an appointment to the Parks and Rec Committee. Do we have any nominations for the committee?
Do, do you want me to review the-
Certainly.
The staff report? The Parks and Rec Recreation Commission is comprised of seven members who serve four-year terms. Bobby Wilson submitted her resignation in June, so this leaves an unexpired term ending January 4th, 2022. So this appointment would be to fill that unexpired term. The interested parties were included in your agenda packet.
Okay, I'll go ahead then and accept nominations.
Can I ask a question before we do nominations?
Certainly.
Is there any problem with a person, part-time or full-time, being employed by the city to work on a commission?
If you're employed, if you're a current employee of the city, then, yeah, you can't serve on a, your commission.
None of the volunteers that I'm aware of serve on the city, or are employees. Shane Cunningham no longer works for the city.
Okay. I thought there was a lifeguard instructor that was-
Katie Tyler is a lifeguard instructor at the pool?
She's a coach, is my understanding, but that's not a city position.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Okay.
So still waiting on nominations?
I have a nomination then for Katie Tyler. She's been very involved with city activities, as would that imply with Park and Rec, and I think she would do good on that.
Hey, any other nominations?
I too would also like to nominate Katie Tyler.
That was going to be my nomination, Katie Tyler.
Mr. Harhay, any nominations for the Parks and Rec Committee?
Shane Cunningham.
And do we have a motion to close nominations?
I'll make a motion to close the nominations.
Second.
All in favor to close nominations?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Should we take them one at a time then? Okay, we'll start first with Ms. Tyler. All in favor of Ms. Tyler, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor of Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Congratulations to Ms. Tyler. I don't know if she's still here, but votes four to one. Thank you. Item number 20, Mr. City Manager, say yours.
Counsel, this item is the monthly report. There are no, there are all routine items that are on the report and nothing to declare as exceptions.
Thank you. Any questions by council on the claims paid report?
No, no questions.
All right, that will bring us to the final public comment period. At this time, a public comment can be on any issue you desire. Anyone wishing to speak?
Mayor, council. My name is Jevon Dixon. I'm a Boulder City resident, Marine Corps veteran in four years, and I've been in law enforcement for 20. I'm very concerned about the homeless population that has kind of boomed in the last, like, six months. Frank Crowe Park and the Rec Center over by the pool in the high school have been used for camping. There's been a brown sedan, or a brown Ford Escape parked on Cherry Street for about a month now, moves around both sides of the street, then they set up like their tents during the day when the sprinklers aren't on, but they're sitting right next to a house that's worth $450,000 on Cherry Street in the historic district, right between where all the restaurants are, between the tap and the coffee cup, and it's unsightly, and I know what homelessness brings. I want to be compassionate, if there's somewhere else they can go, and maybe get some faith-based organizations to help them out. That's something we definitely need to look into. I would kind of like to know if this has been brought up before, or if we have a plan to combat this kind of thing. Can I ask you that question?
We're, we're not required to respond to you.
Okay, that's fine.
But I, I will tell you this, it's certainly been brought to my attention by many citizens, and we are looking into doing, developing something, a response or a policy with regard to it.
Okay, appreciate your time. Thank you.
Linda Barnett, I hope you don't mind me taking time to clear the air again about the Boulder City Community Alliance, and I thank you, Mayor, for your insights, trying to give it to people who probably just have their ears completely stuffed up. I take offense once again at the cheap shots at Boulder City Community Alliance. These comments are exaggerated, starting with our last election, when two elect candidates not associated with BCCA. There are attendees at meetings, as everyone knows, there are no members. There is a very limited email list that Laura had mentioned in another meeting, I'm on it, and then I just circulate to other people who may be interested in the topics like Thursday RDA. It's not the war on terror, I mean, this is just an educational group, please. It's baloney to insinuate that people who attend these meetings should not be considered for a committee. This is a, this is nonsensical propaganda from a very negative faction that's trying to brainwash others who just don't know better. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment?
Judy DeShane, if we do the pool or you put this committee together, I know last time it was stated they had all these public meetings. Well, great many of those public meetings only involved, you know, a specific group of people that, you know, they either had kids swimming, or they themselves were swimmers, or exercises, or whatever, so a lot of people were not included in those meetings. So I would like to make sure that all the meetings are definitely known by all the residents, so that we all hear everything that is being said and have some options, as opposed to it just being, some people want this, some people want that, and that's why, part of why it grew so unbelievably unhandable for the residents, and we got up to the 40 million, so let's keep it where everybody is aware of what's going on from day one. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll close the last public comment period, and that brings us to council reports. We'll start with Mr. Harhay. Mr. Harhay, do you have any council reports? Does it look like he's off?
Yeah, it does look like he's off.
Okay. Councilman Adams then?
Yeah, since our last council meeting, I have, I was sworn into the Southern Nevada Health District Board. Some of the things that we were discussing, it was kind of just a very basic thing, but some of the things that we are addressing right now, there is an increased incidence rate of hepatitis A going on throughout Clark County in Southern Nevada. I believe the numbers were, we are at twice the number of cases at this point than we were this time last year, so certainly a concern. We have had, I believe, 10 to 12 cases of West Nile virus now, people actually contracting West Nile virus, so that is on the rise. It will probably start to die down, but as years progress, it could potentially get, get worse. This isn't to scare anybody, this is just to, to inform you all, so. Those are some of the two, two big topics that we were discussing. There will be further discussion. My next meeting is at the end of the month on Thursday, so looking forward to it.
I too got to attend my first meetings, commission meetings, I'm on the Southern Nevada Water Authority Board, and we, two of the big issues we talked about were resolutions supporting the prevention of installation of non-functional turf on Southern, in Southern Nevada. If the only person, and the, and the criteria for that is, if the only person who walks on it is the person who mows it, it may be non-functional turf, and, and that's a big issue, and they've got a strong conservation campaign going on that. The other, and this will be voted on by the commissioners, the county commissioners, is there is a public hearing, I have to read it from here, regarding an ordinance to propose for the adoption by the Clark County Board, a county commission related to the cessation of the quarter cent sales tax for water and wastewater infrastructure projects, we're the only ones who had a sunset clause on that quarter cent. Quarter cent of what we pay in sales tax is for water and infrastructure, and we get about a million dollars a year from that quarter cent. So if they decided to not get rid of the sunset clause, then we would lose that quarter cent sales tax. So we do not on the Water Authority make that final decision, but we did make that recommendation to the commission. I'm also on the Debt Management Commission. I've been to one meeting, and we approved $400 million to CCDC for building schools. And I did learn a lot about the bond process, which I didn't know going into it, and talked to a bond counsel, and about what the process is in terms of getting a bond for a municipality, to get a bond, what it takes, and looking at the paperwork that was even involved by, for the school district. And finally, I will be attending my first Southern Nevada Regional Planning Commission meeting next week, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Folda?
I haven't had a lot of meetings yet, but we'll start next week. I'll meet with all the department heads, so I'm looking forward to that. I just wanted to make the public announcement that school has started. Today was the second day of school, and so be careful when you're driving out there, and look out for those littles, not only around the school, but on their, you know, the walk home. We have a lot of walkers and bikers that don't quite use the crosswalks like they should, so just be careful when you're out there. And then Mayor McMenness notified me that today is International Left-Handers Day, so I'm congratulating myself and all those other left-handers out there.
Well, congratulations to all the South Paws. You know, I had a math teacher in high school that was left-handed, and first day of class each year, he'd say, okay, who's left-handed? And of course, there'd be, you know, those three people that would raise their left hand, and then he'd say, okay, you have As, everybody else is going to have to work for it. But it is National Left-Handers Day. I wanted to make a couple of comments about our Utility Advisory Committee. Thanks to Dennis Porter, the Utilities Director, for helping out with that. We hope to see some information get produced from them. Everyone else has mentioned their new committees and commissions. I went to my first Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority meeting this morning. Now I remember why I don't go anywhere near Paradise and Desert Inn. But a really great convention happened to be going on at the same time, it's called the Magic Convention. They talked today a lot about numbers, especially visitation at the airport. This year will probably set a record for McCarran Airport passenger count out there. It has already set records for the number of seats that now fly in to McCarran. They are working on the $300 million expansion of the convention center. That will obviously be something they look forward to filling up with even more people. So those are things that, you know, Las Vegas works on very hard, but they also benefit Boulder City by doing that as well. And lastly, I just want to say, welcome, Councilwoman Folda. I think she's going to be an excellent person on this council, and I hope your first meeting went okay. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.